Good evening, everyone. Thanks for being here and welcome to everyone who's watching online on YouTube. This is a call in order, the June 7th, 2021 City of Tonkinoxi Council Meeting. My name is David Fries. I'm the Mayor of Tonkinoxi. Mr. Porter, would you mind calling the roll, please?
Mr. Hempel.
Here.
Mr. Dale.
Here.
Ms. Stevens.
Here.
Ms. McCutcheon.
Here.
Mayor Fries.
Here.
Mr. Donnelly's absent. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. Would you please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everyone. First up is the approval of minutes. Is, are there any questions or any discussion on the minutes, or is there a motion?
I'll motion to approve.
So, okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. On the number three consent agenda, review the bill payments. Did anyone have any questions or any discussion over the consent agenda? If not, I'd be looking for a motion to approve.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Ms. Stevens?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Dale. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you very much. It's not on our, it's not on our agenda. Normally, we have an open period where people are allowed to speak if they speak, if they sign up before 1:00 PM. Mr. Porter, did anyone sign up before the deadline?
Mayor, we had no signups by the deadline, but we do have two people who requested to address the council about item number 5C, the rezoning item. So, at your discretion, at that item, you could have public comment for three minutes from those two people, if you'd like.
Okay. Yeah, so if you could invite them to the podium, that'd be great.
Mayor, it might be better to work through item A and B first, if you'd prefer, so we can align the discussion with the, with the items.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. Item four is old business and seeing none. We'll move on to new business. Item five, item A, public hearing to determine the structure located at 602 Yoke Street should be condemned. Mr. Brekovich.
Thanks, Mayor. Items, actually, A and B are related. Item A is a public hearing. The city attorney, Anna Kerselik, is on the phone. Our chief building official, Brandon Harder, is here as well and can answer any questions. And I'll do a quick introduction, maybe turn it over to Ms. Kerselik to talk through where we, what's left in the process. As you probably recall, there was a fire at this property in early March. In April, the city council heard about the process, both taking into account city ordinance as well as state statute about what a process would look like for condemnation of a property. And so, we started to move forward with that. There was a series of publications that were required for that resolution, providing notice to any party that had interest in that property, both the listed owner and any potential outstanding debt or mortgages on the property. We've been able to properly service notice to everyone. And what we were targeting and hoping is that between the fire, between those action items, and coming to the public hearing this evening on the item, that the property owner would have had a chance to make some efforts towards the repair or the demolition of the property themselves. And it's my understanding that no such efforts have taken place. And so, thus, we're here at this point to conduct a public hearing. Anna, if you can hear me, feel free to jump in at this point, maybe talk a little bit more about what the public hearing might entail this evening and as well as what would be left process-wise, once that's completed.
Yes, this is Anna Kerselik. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, so what we're here for tonight, like George said, is to have a public hearing. And it is on whether the governing body would determine that this structure is unsafe and dangerous. And the resolution is to declare that if you, if you find that that is the case, based on testimony that you may hear from the city building inspector and the property owner, if he is in attendance. And then, the statutes also allow any owner's agents or the lien holder of record or any occupants of the property to testify as well. But the purpose of tonight's hearing, again, is just to determine whether or not you believe that that structure is unsafe or dangerous. And if it is, you would adopt a resolution that then authorizes, or it orders the property owner to take remedial action, which in this case is demolition, within 30 days. And that is also set in the city code, that minimum time period of 30 days. And as you will see in the resolution, I specified July 7th, which is 30 days from tonight. And then, in the event that the owner does not commence to take those steps by that date, then the city building inspector would be authorized to proceed with demolition. The city code does require the city building inspector to come back and get consent from the governing body. This resolution essentially does that, but in discussing this with city staff, we believe that they would likely need to come back anyway to have a contract authorized in order to proceed with, with demolition. So, we would just ask for that consent at that time. Do you have any questions?
Any questions, counsel? You can continue, Anna.
Okay. Beyond that, so at this point, I would hear from the city building inspector based on an update on the report of the property that you had received the last time this was considered, which I believe was in May?
May.
I'm not sure of the exact date, May. And then, so after this, we would also, obviously, we would come back with any request to abate the condition of the property by demolishing it. And at that time, we would address any next steps from there.
Good evening, and thank you for having me. I'm Brandon Harder, city building inspector. From the last time we had the hearing on April 19th, the property owner, Mr. Stein, was present at the hearing. That was also the last time that I have spoken with and where I've seen Mr. Stein. He has not been in touch with me any further since that day. As far as the property goes, specific items from the property have been removed, and those items were originally discussed about being taken off the property, which was some personal tools and a car off the property. That was prior to the April 19th hearing. From that time, nothing else has changed. No attempts to secure the structure anymore. Nothing else has been removed from the property and no attempts to remodel or secure or make safe the property anymore than what it is now. It's still in the same condition it was the night it burned, and that's where we currently sit right now.
Let me ask a question. Mr. Harder, you said, "He has not been in touch with me." Can you tell me what kind of efforts you've made to make contact with him?
I've attempted to call him once or twice since then. He rarely returns my calls. That's the only way to communicate with him is by phone. I don't have an email address for him, nor do I know where he currently resides at since the house fire.
Thank you. Counsel, do you have any questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Harder.
Yes.
What's the next step, gentlemen?
Mayor, one, for item A, we do need to make an announcement that the public hearing has been opened, ask if there's anyone to address you, and then take the action of closing the public hearing, which are just your, your actions. So, you could do that at this time if you.
Thank, thank you very much. At this point, I would like to open the public hearing for item A. Is there anyone here who would like to speak to that item? Okay, I'm not seeing anyone. Is there anyone who wants to speak in general about that item? I just want to make sure that every, I just want to make sure that everybody gets a chance to talk. Okay. Then I will close the public hearing at this point, and we'll move on to item B. The resolution to declare the structure located at 602 Yoke Street to be unsafe and dangerous. Mr. Brekovich?
Sure, Mayor. So, I just wanted to make sure that Ms. Kerselik could hear all of that. And in summary, Mr. Harder reported that there's been no attempts to stabilize or to pull permits to do the demo work from the owner. And then, no one had come forward during the public hearing comments. So, at this point, we're ready for the city council to consider the resolution. Staff would be happy to answer any additional questions. Again, to reiterate the calendar that Ms. Kerselik said, we have to provide at least 30 days. So, again, the fire occurred in March. That would take it to July 7th. During that timeframe, that, that would be the opportunity for the homeowner to present that there's a plan or he's got financing in place to go take care of the problem. If not, we would then return. Our next regularly scheduled meeting would be July 19th, where staff would try to, my assumption at that point is staff would proceed with a request to issue an RFP for the demo and cleanup services for the property at that address. Anna, did I miss anything on that?
That's correct.
Okay. Counsel, do you have any questions or any discussion at this point?
I mean, we all recall the time when the chamber is filled up with 30 individuals who expressed concerns mainly about this particular property. So, I mean, that, it's been an issue for many years in this community, and the fire exacerbated it.
Did you have something, Mayor Protem?
No, sir. No, sir, Mayor.
Just want to keep in mind here that we're talking about a human being's home. At the same time, we're talking about a community that needs to be safe. So, I would, at this point, look for a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead, Mr. Hempel.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution 06-21-01, declaring the structure located at 602 Yoke Street, Tonkinoxi, Kansas, to be unsafe, dangerous, and ordered the structure to be demo, to be demolished pursuant to KSA 12-1750 and section 8-501 of the Tonkinoxi City Code.
Thank you, Mr. Hempel. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Dale. One more time, is there any discussion on the motion or the issue? Okay. Seeing none, Mr. Porter, will you call the roll for the vote, please?
Ms. McCutcheon.
Yes.
Ms. Stevens.
Yes.
Mr. Dale.
Yes.
Mr. Hempel.
Yes.
All ayes, Mayor. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. Moving on to item C, ordinance 1497.
Thanks, Mayor. This item is related to a proposal for a project commonly known as Coleman Estates. It creates six single-family lots. This project has gone through a number of steps, including voluntary annexation. It's gone through the planning and zoning process for rezoning and both preliminary and final plat. The rezoning action, there was a successful protest petition filed by the affected property owners that represent 20% or more of the impacted areas, both from a combination of the city requirement for notice area as well as the county requirement for notification area. So, that protest petition then results in that item coming before you tonight for consideration. There was a staff report and planning commission vote to approve the rezoning as part of the project to maybe situate you with it. It's located between a smaller lot, single-family development, and then some larger lot county properties that are rural residential. And the developers' comments during the planning meetings were, and when we've had development meetings with them, is the attempt at those larger lots is an attempt to make a transitional pattern from the higher-density, smaller-lot, single-family into the existing county rural residential. But as I mentioned, that item did have a valid protest petition. I know that there's at least two folks here that are tonight that would like to speak on that item, and it might be appropriate to hear from them at this time unless you have questions for staff.
Have them cut forward. If you don't mind, state your name and your address, and go to town.
Okay. And if I may, if I can speak on her behalf, if I may take her minutes if I run over my three, if that's okay. My name is Robert L. Johnson, Jr., 20845 State Avenue, Tonkinoxi, Kansas. And I'm speaking on behalf of Barbara Hardesty, 20840 Sandusky Road.
Did you have something that you wanted to discuss?
Yes, I didn't know. I was just waiting for you.
Yep. Hey, it's just my first rodeo, so.
Okay, so we'd already done the protest petition. It's been okay and everything. I take it. And one of the issues, the main issue we have is the retention pond that's on the southeast corner of Lot 6. And at April 1st, when I was notified of what's going on, it showed that it's contingent of my permission documentation acknowledgement from the downstream property owner for this change in discharge of stormwater from the development, should it be provided to the city. That's of April 1st. March 6th, I received the same thing, had the same acknowledgement, permission, when I got it like four days before the meeting. The revised edition with the memo states, "Recommended action, consider approval of stormwater drainage plant without contingency." So, they're not giving us a chance to argue it. And the first cha, the first one, April 1st, the water's going to run into my pond. And that's when I said, "I'm not, I'm not okay with that." Okay? Then the second design shows that the water's going to run to the southeast into the adjacent property south of me. And that's Mrs. Barbara Hardesty. That's her property. And she opposes that also. Okay, and that, you know, that's where that's at on that. That's where we, I get nervous with this, but anyhow. There's where our initial proposal is on that because of the quality of life. That retention pond takes up half of Lot 6, and if there's two different designs on that Lot 6 showing how that retention pond takes half of that property owner's space for that retention pond. We're worried about the quality of life due to larva, mosquitoes, you know, standing water, et cetera, et cetera. The initial proposal that I saw was supposed to be a cul-de-sac at the bottom of the road, you know, for the extension. The second proposal shows that T-bar or hammerhead, whichever one you want to call it. And talking to city officials and everything else, it's for you, the city has, for future planning, they want to bring that road down and extend it out, okay? So, then connect to West Street, which is behind my pond, which is on her property, where that future road would be at. That's an issue on that itself. The grinders, that's my, the grinders on the residential property, is, from my understanding, is going to be the residents', the landowner's responsibility.
Hold on just a second until we get this clock thing figured out.
Get ready, set.
Okay.
Okay, with that hammerhead, plus with that water and how they're going to put it right up adjacent supposedly against my property, residue is going to run off my property, even though they have a curb, even though there's slope for the excess water. You know debris is going to come over to my property. That's a concern of mine also. I would think that when the planning committee done that, they would have asked the developer to have an alternative plat design if it would not be, you know, up to standards, okay? And I didn't see one on that. I would think there should have been. Last, the last point I have on that basically is the retention pond and how it affects Mrs. Hardesty and myself, the quality of life that may be presented, a decrease of quality of life, and maybe the value, it might, detriment of value to the properties because of that retention pond, set on that, on Lot 6. That being said, the last thing that's never been addressed in these plats is that I have a conveyance of driveway easement and interest in well that was dated 1996 that gives me a 30-foot easement of A-track of that property that's right to the east of me, or west of me. And I have this right here that was dated 1996, and nobody's ever addressed that easement on this, to the joint property. And that's for ingress and egress on my behalf. That being said, thank you for your time.
Do you mind standing up there for a little bit longer and see if we have any questions, sir?
Okay.
First, staff, is there anything mentioned there that you would disagree with or find incorrect?
Yeah, I mean, Mr. Johnson's entitled his opinion. I know the developer's representative is here. Again, those items have gone through planning, and they are concerns that, it sounds like some of the concerns are with the plat, but the, the issue, when I was discussing this with Mr. Johnson, was the one chance outside of the plating process that's done at the planning commission to voice concern to the city council is specifically related to the protest petition on the rezoning. And so, I'm not sure if it's a specific issue with this project as much as it is some of the, the details about stormwater. But as I mentioned, the developer's representative is here and could maybe rebuff some of those comments if they're so willing, willing to do so. But in essence, that is what we heard from some of the neighbors during at least two of the planning commissions this project had. And the planning commission considered those comments and moved forward with the votes that were provided. And I think we provided the minutes from those meetings as well. But I don't think it's, it's appropriate for staff to comment on, on the question you asked in particular. But if you, if you wanted to hear from the developer, their representative is here as well.
I apologize for the inappropriateness. Sure, I would love to hear from the developer's representative. Thank you, sir. I appreciate you speaking up.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
You want to reset the clock, Dan?
Yeah, sure. I'll go down through his issues. His first issue is the detention pond.
Sir, may, I'm sorry, can you state your name and address?
I'm sorry, C.L. Maugh, Land Plan Engineering. I'm representing Dan Lynch. He's the one that's developing the property. The first issue is the detention pond. Like he said the first time, we showed, part of that pond is on our property. There's a piece of it that's located on our property now, today. So, that's what we planned on using it at the time. He was not happy about that when we brought the plans up. So, we changed it, and we made the detention pond. Detention ponds, regulation of the city. I can't let the stormwater off-site without holding it back. That's regulations you guys have. So, the only way you can really do is detention pond. So, we did that. We made sure we metered out no greater than what's there today. When it goes off, you know, sheet flow, we had to concentrate the flow, but that's just part of development. We also made sure that there was no water from our site going to east or going south, other than going into that detention pond. So, we have fulfilled that obligation he requested in the last two planning commission meetings. The road showing is a T, a hammerhead. First, we showed the cul-de-sac. The city was concerned about that just because of the size of that and the way it was in those other lots. So, we went with the hammerhead design, which is used other places. And it's basically the hammerhead design is because of fire protection. They have to have the area to turn around. And so, that's what, that's why we ended up with this hammerhead. He was also talking about debris. The hammerhead will have curb and gutter on it. It'll have curb elements on either side of it to catch that water, puts it in. And so, I mean, there's going to be some debris. I'm not going to say there's none that'll be on his property, but it's, it's still going to be caught. And that water that's coming down 300 foot of street will be directed down to the detention pond. Stick with that. The easement, I had not seen anything about the easement. As for this property, it didn't come through a title commitment, or did it, and it didn't show up. But if it's a 30-foot easement access to this property, I don't know where it is, but he's got access to right-of-way that when we extend this street to his property, we don't stop at a foot short. It goes to his property. So, he has access, goes to that drive to get across his property onto this public street. So, I don't know where this 30-foot access, but it doesn't matter. He's got access to right-of-way. So, someday, if he ever wants to, he can extend that road on through his property and develop his property. Whether he wants to or not, I'm not saying he has to, but it's, the ability is there to do that. He was talking about the future design. That's 20 years down the road someday. I mean, I don't know when Tonkinoxi is going to grow that direction. So, that's the city planning. You guys showed that a long time ago. We're just fulfilling this spot here. So, anyway, thanks.
Okay, thank you very much. Did you have a question, Ms. Stevens?
At this point, the, the details of the project are one thing, but the actual ordinance tonight is just about the rezoning of this property, right? Is that?
Yes, that's correct. Currently, we're projecting that the preliminary plat doesn't typically come back to city council, but the final plat does, and we're anticipating that to be at the June 21st city council meeting. We're seeking some clarification on the plat itself pertaining to responsible parties for the detention basin easement and how that will be recorded with the county.
Any more questions, counsel?
I guess the question I have, does the detention pond and everything else meet city standards and city codes?
Yes, I believe it's been, well, I know it's been reviewed by the city planner and the city engineer and has been signed off on, save for needing to see the construction plans for, related to the project itself.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any questions, any other questions, counsel?
No.
Will there be another opportunity for neighbors to voice their concerns before this gets, this project gets going?
I think pursuant to the concerns that the neighbors have voiced throughout the process, I think there would be one additional opportunity to speak during an open public comment on June 21st regarding the plat itself.
And that's regardless?
What's that?
We're projecting June 21st, but as Mr. Porter said, if we, if for whatever reason the documents aren't done in time, it, we would certainly provide Mr. Johnson with notice of when that plat would be on an agenda for consideration because of the concerns they voiced.
I just want to make sure that we're hearing from everyone and getting all the information that we can. So, at this point, I guess I would entertain a motion if there's no more discussion.
I, I agree, Mr. Mayor, that we, of course, want to have all of the information, and I think we'll have more information come a plat discussion. So, to not slow that down or stop that, I would make a motion to approve ordinance number 1497, amending the Tonkinoxi zoning and subdivision regulations by rezoning certain property commonly known as 2079 Jackson Drive, Tonkinoxi, Kansas, from RR Rural District to RSF Single Family District.
Thank you, Mr. Dale. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Hempel. Mr. Porter, will you call a voice vote, please?
Mayor, actually, before we go to vote, if Anna can hear us, there's a particular vote requirement on these types. vote requirement on these types of procedures. Um, and so if Anna, if you want to give a quick update, if you can hear me.
Yes, uh, this is Anna Kerselich. You can hear me correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So because a protest petition has been filed, uh, this does require a three-quarters majority vote of the membership of the governing body. The city code does define the governing body to include the mayor. So a, an affirmative vote of all five that are present tonight would be required in order to pass this rezoning ordinance. You do have three options. One is to adopt by ordinance, which would require that unanimous approval tonight. Two would be to override the recommendation of the planning commission, which requires a two-thirds majority, and in this case that would be five, or, uh, four, excuse me, uh, four votes to override the planning commission. And then, and that, the effect of that would be to deny the rezoning. And then third option is to return the matter to the planning commission with a statement specifying the basis for the governing body's failure to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Kerselich. I didn't hear what she said. I apologize.
Anna asked if there were any questions from the governing body?
No. And I think you said, you said the first thing required three-fourths, 75%, and that includes the mayor? And we have five present tonight then, so four of five would be?
Five votes.
Yeah.
Five, six.
All five. If it, if it was three-fourths, 75%,
Okay.
Then four fives is 80.
Yeah, for the purpose of this vote, it doesn't take into account if someone's absent. So
Okay.
So you have to assume there's six members of the elected body. It takes five votes and the mayor is included in a vote on this type of issue.
Okay. Mr. Port, um, do you want to amend your, um, motion anyway?
No, I, I don't.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Porter, will you call a voice vote, please?
Ms. McCutcheon.
Yes.
Ms. Stevens.
Yes.
Mayor Freeze.
Yes.
Mr. Dale.
Yes.
Mr. Hempel.
Yes.
All eyes, Mayor. Motion passes. Thank you.
Folks, I want you to understand that this is not the end of the process. It's just another step in the process and there will be opportunities still for you to, uh, present your side of it some more and you will be heard. Um, we are your representatives and will, uh, try to do right by both, by both, by all of y'all.
I don't really care if that next into the city. It's, it's fine with me, but the last piece of paper I had indicated that all the water would be pushed off to the south because of me and that was the switching down high problem. As long as he can tell me he's got a retention pond and he's keeping his water up there, I don't care.
I, I, I hear your concerns and I think, I think those will be easy, more easily addressed when we have a plat document in front of us that shows us where everything is going to be laid out. Right now with just the zoning is what we were considering, that, that's a different animal. So I look forward to, to seeing both sides myself.
Yeah, I think we all need some more information, um, for the next step. That's for sure. Okay. Thank you all for coming. I appreciate it. Moving on to item D, consider approval of 2021 fireworks permit applications.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, this application is, is required for the city to complete in order to consider the approval of annual permits issued to purveyors of fireworks in the city limits. There's a $500 application fee that's been paid by each of the three applicants and the applications are included in their packets. The city council's approval is one initial step. We then work with the state to, um, allow the permit holders to apply for the various state licensure they need. But what we also will include, uh, upon closer to their setup date and once they set up is an onsite inspection by members of the fire department who will help ensure that these, uh, three stands are each set up in a safe manner and, um, look out for any potential uh, safety hazards that are on those sites as they're being constructed. Uh, the sites in general and the purveyors are each returnees from prior years. So if you have any questions about the applications in particular, we'd be happy to answer them. But staff do recommend approval with the motion included in the agenda packet for tonight and we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. Are there any questions? If not, then I would, um, look for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, um, I'll make a motion to approve the 2021 fireworks sales permits for Rockstar Fireworks, Anthony Miller and Garrett's Worldwide Enterprises LLC.
Thank you, Ms. Stevens. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. McCutcheon. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Uh, item E, consider authorization of survey and study phase of Church Street Bridge replacement project. Staff?
Thanks, Mayor. So you should recall that when we developed our CMIP budget this time last year for this current year budget, the top priority under our bridge replacement was the Church Street Bridge. It's currently posted for weight limits, uh, makes it prohibitive for even some city vehicles to travel safely across that. Um, as we were developing the budget, one of the items that we anticipated being recipients of is a grant through one of the KDOT programs for the off-bridge system. Um, we unfortunately were notified that we weren't awarded a grant. And so, uh, to put it in simple budget terms, we had anticipated funding about $180,000 of a, a approximate $400,000 cost. We've, uh, gone back with BG and Brian Kingsley, our city engineers here tonight, and he can provide a little additional detail if you need it. But essentially, you know, costs for the bridge haven't changed, although we've identified a, an, another issue. If you can visualize where the bridge is, um, moving directly east from there is where city crews have done some bank stabilization work. Uh, the creek channel was, uh, eroding into the, uh, adjacent neighbor's yard there. There's a channel though between the east edge of the bridge and where we've done the stabilization work that's also eroding on the banks and really has a potential impact to Anne Street itself. Uh, and so the recommendation is to do a, a hydrology study of the volume of water that's coming through that bridge and why that level of erosion is occurring. And, um, that's what was presented by the city engineer. From a staff perspective, we agree because we think we need to have a better fundamental understanding of that before we make a decision on how the bridge will be placed, if we have to angle the bridge in a different manner than it is today. Uh, do we need to vacate a portion of Anne Street there because, you know, we, we're not able to stabilize that? So the, the report and the proposal before you tonight is, serves really two purposes. One, it's again to, to stay on track that we want to address Church Street Bridge this year. Number two, the cost has shifted and we probably don't have the funds in place to do the full bridge replacement right now, but we can get a lot of the study work and design work underway once we, um, and then after our discussions with BG, uh, we could always try to do them concurrently, but it would make more sense to go issue the study, get that, get those findings back and then proceed to design work once we have that better understanding. And so that's the proposal. I believe, uh, BG is estimating that to be $23,000 cost to, to do the, the study itself. Brian, uh, you're welcome to come up and make comment if I missed anything or if you'd like to clarify anything.
Hello, Brian Kingsley with BG Consultants. Uh, George did a great job overviewing what I was going to talk about. Um, one thing I want to make sure that we're clear on tonight is that KDOT would only consider funding of the bridge structure itself. We knew that we had some erosion issues, uh, downstream. We know that we wanted to look at the channel upstream too. The exhibit that, uh, Dan shared with you tonight, the red lines on there represent cross-sections. So the surveyors are going to go out and just from, uh, just the other side of 2440 down to the, uh, confluence with Tongonoxi Creek Tributary, uh, we would be taking cross-sections, looking at the, not only the channel stabilization, but also the conveyance of the channel to make sure that it's adequate and we're not going to have problems in the future. That could affect the alignment of the bridge. Um, there's also been some staff discussion too. Uh, we put together a conceptual estimate that I think is also included in your packets that had a total project, uh, conceptual cost of somewhere around $628,000. Uh, that's conceptual at best at this point. We may not need to go as far upstream and downstream and this study is really going to help us determine the extents and also, um, try to identify any improvements with grading the channel or stabilizing the channel that city staff may be able to perform rather than hiring a contractor. You may be able to save some money there. So the thought process is get through, uh, a really good understanding so that we can take this conceptual project estimate and firm numbers up so that you really know what budget you need to, to consider there to construct the project. I'll be happy to answer any questions. Do you think there's anything else that needs to be covered?
Counsel, any questions for Mr. Kingsley? Thank you, sir. Okay, so at this point, um, we're considering the, we're looking for a motion on the authorization of this, of the study. Uh, I have, I have one question. Mr. Hempel, you've been here longer than me. Uh, a friend of mine has lived there for 20 years and a two-inch rain brings the creek flush with his yard. Um, has it always been like that?
Pretty well.
Yeah, okay.
But I think with, I think with the alignment, and that's one reason, do the study first, we very well may be able to help control the flow because we might take them tubes and move them more one way versus the other way and it would help the flow of the water also. So we need to get the study done so we can go ahead and get it done. And then that way that'll tell us more definite answers about the construction of the project.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hempel. Any questions, counsel? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
I will make a motion to authorize the performance of the Church Street Bridge Project Survey and Study Phase by BG Consultants, Inc. for an amount not to exceed $23,000.
Thank you, Ms. McCutcheon. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Hempel. Uh, Mr. Porter, will you call a voice vote, please?
Ms. McCutcheon.
Yes.
Ms. Stevens.
Yes.
Mr. Dale.
Yes.
Mr. Hempel.
Yes.
All eyes, Mayor. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. Uh, moving on to item F, Resolution 062102.
Thank you, Mayor.
Sorry.
Oh, yes. Resolution 062102. Uh, this is probably tying a record for one of the longest agenda items, uh, in terms of pages and somewhat in terms of complexity. Kent Hesketh, our Public Works Director, has been integral to preparing this information and, uh, the summary of bids received on two separate RFPs and the collection of quotes for additional work associated with the project. And, and all of these initiatives were, uh, key items in the 2021 adopted budget, uh, prepared and, and adopted by the city council last summer. Uh, we've been before you previously, uh, several months ago with consideration of approval of the draft scope of work for the two RFPs. The first for mill and overlay services and the second for micro-surfacing through the application of a technique called slurry seal. Um, both of those, uh, efforts are intended to preserve and extend the lifetime of the pavement in, in question, the city streets, and they will, um, help fulfill one of the goals of the, um, utilization of some of the proceeds of the three-quarter cent sales tax. We've looked previously at areas of the city that are in need of the most attention and that's how the streets, in addition to their, um, recent condition, were prioritized for this project. We placed RFPs, uh, notices on May 12th and collected bids June 1st. We did receive, uh, several competitive responses for both, uh, the RFPs. Uh, more, I, I believe four for the, uh, mill and overlay services and just two for the micro-surfacing, but both were in, um, competitive position with other responses. Little Joe's Asphalt, who's performed the work for the city's RFPs for street maintenance over the past several years, did have the low bid for mill and overlay at $160,540.70. Staff reviewed the bid and did confirm that it is complete and recommended for approval by the city council tonight. We also, uh, received the low bid from Pavement Management LLC for $137,588 to complete the micro-surfacing work. Staff reviewed that bid and also proposed that it be accepted by the city council. We prepared draft contracts in accordance with a format, uh, acceptable to the city attorney, uh, that's been used in previous years and that's included in the packet for reference and those contracts incorporate the quotes provided in response to the RFP. Finally, we also have, uh, a new addition to the work, um, that's included, uh, in the bid summary as well, and that is for pavement striping on the areas, uh, where micro-surfacing treatment was applied, especially along Main Street and moving up, uh, Pleasant Street to Washington and then, um, a crosswalk, uh, at Washington on the speed hump that's located near the elementary, uh, middle school technically. So all in, the total cost for these three initiatives is $308,627. The city's estimate for the special highway fund, which should be used to fund expenditures of street maintenance activities, was only $280,580. So we all are short in that regard. Staff do propose that we complete a budget amendment to express, uh, expressly allow in that fund the expenditure of extra dollars to meet that total cost of $308,627. The special highway fund maintains over $300,000 in fund balance from prior year quotes coming in lower than what was budgeted. So there's no adverse financial impact to that fund. Uh, in a, in addition, prior to that budget amendment that we'll propose, uh, coming up in the next several weeks at a future council meeting, the city's capital projects fund, which is an eligible spender of these dollars, does have enough budget authority remaining from other projects and from general budget authority that it can cover the difference should the budget amendment not be approved. So in essence, we'll, we'll propose a budget amendment to help true up the funds to identify street spending and the street special highway fund. Uh, but in the meantime, we're okay to proceed with acceptance of all three quotes at this point, which would allow the work to get started and completed, uh, in a timely fashion this year. Um, the resolution does authorize the acceptance of all three projects, so if there's any, uh, changes to request or concerns, we would need to make that adjustment, but staff would request a motion, uh, to approve that resolution and award those contracts for the numbers stated in, in this presentation. If Kent has any comments to add, I'd be glad to turn it over to him. Great, thank you. Happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. Uh, counsel, do you have any questions?
No.
Uh, seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution 06 dash 21 dash 02, awarding Little Joe Asphalt, Inc., the 2021 Mill and Overlay Project in an amount not to exceed $160,540.70. Also, uh, make the motion to, uh, I guess one motion will cover all three, uh, Pavement Management LLC, the, uh, 2021 Micro-Surfacing Project for a amount not to exceed $137,588. And Twin Traffic Marketing Corporation for the 2021 Crosswalk Thermal Plastic and Striping Project, not to exceed $10,497.50. And also like to put in there that, uh, as per staff attachments, because a lot of the staff attachments show the location in that, so. So all three of the attachments apply to.
Thank you, Mr. Hempel. Um, just, uh, make sure the staff is, that motion is what you're after. Is that correct?
Sounds great. Thank you.
Great. Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Uh, Mr. Porter, will you call the roll for the vote, please?
Ms. McCutcheon.
Yes.
Ms. Stevens.
Yes.
Mr. Dale.
Yes.
Mr. Hempel.
Yes.
All eyes, Mayor. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Porter. Uh, moving on to item G, Resolution 062103.
Thanks, Mayor. So this resolution is approving and authorizing acceptance by the City of Tongonoxi for public utility easements from two property owners, um, Elmer and Annalee Tanking and Lee Tanking and Drew and Amy Overmiller. This is, uh, specifically for a waterline easement that, uh, it's a 12-inch loop line. As you recall, we had always envisioned running a secondary line to the business park. Um, part of the recommendation from the Port Authority and subsequently funds that we, we received from the Board of County of Leavenworth County Commissioners, um, in the amount of, uh, 1.2 million to assist with the cost of completing the interceptor sanitary sewer line, also included a provision for installing this water line. Um, so staff has gone out. We've purchased that water line. We'll use our in-house staff to actually do the installation. We have a preferred alignment. We have, um, everything in place with, that we need on three of the four property owners. Um, the last one, I'm, uh, confident will get it completed. We just didn't have it in time to submit with the other two this evening. Um, the, uh, other commitment we made, um, at least to Mr. and Mrs. Tanking, was that, uh, before, even if we approved the resolution and authorized the signatures, I committed to them that I would take the document back before them so they could visually observe it was the same document that they signed that was important to them. Um, otherwise, this is part of monies we've expended before to do the design and preferred alignment for the water line, and nothing has changed from those plans. And, and this just finishes the piece of easement, and then we could move to construction on that project later this year. We've, uh, as I mentioned, we've already purchased the pipes. So I'd be happy to answer any questions or, uh, I'm sure Mr. Kingsley or Mr. Hesketh could add technical, uh, comments if you needed them.
Gentlemen, do you have anything to add?
Unless you have questions.
Okay. Counsel, do you have questions for anyone in the room? If seeing none, then I would entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution, uh, 06-21-03, approving and authorizing acceptance by City Tongonoxi, Kansas, of public utility easements from Elmer F. and Anna Lee Tanking and Drew L. and Amy E. Overmiller.
Thank you, Mr. Hempel. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Stevens. Uh, Mr. Porter, will you call the roll, please?
Ms. McCutcheon?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Dale?
Yes.
Mr. Hempel?
Yes.
All eyes, Mayor. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item H, considering, consider approval of temporary CMB license for the Leavenworth County Rodeo.
Thank you, Mayor. The city received this application from Mike Kissinger on behalf of the Leavenworth County Fair Association. Uh, this is a similar item to one that was approved back in 2019 prior to the pandemic, and it's for a temporary CMB, um, sale allowance at the fairgrounds during the rodeo, um, event in a specified area. This is a required licensure for them to acquire, to sell alcohol on the premises, and the city would work with the state to help them submit the required paperwork should it be approved by the city council. In most cases like this in city limits, the city would have a public safety, um, concern to address. But in, in the case of this particular event, uh, police services are, are undertaken by the county sheriff, and so our city police department is aware of it and, and, um, monitoring it, but not necessarily directly staffing the event or dealing with issues that might, uh, arise. We don't have any concerns to voice on behalf of staff, and so, um, happy to answer any questions you have, but look for approval of the motion and the agenda statement.
Counsel, is there any discussion or any questions? If not, then I would, uh, entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the, uh, CMB application for the Leavenworth County Rodeo and Bullback for consumption on the, uh, Leavenworth County Fairground premises.
Thank you, Mr. Hempel. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. McCutcheon. Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Let me just say that how wonderful it is to be able to talk about outdoor events, getting together, and rodeos above all.
Great.
Agreed.
Um, item A, City Manager Agenda.
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, just one item this evening. It's, uh, reviewing the 2021 budget initiatives. Uh, as you recall, a couple of meetings ago, we presented a brief, two-page document that outlined our budget initiatives based by fund type and simply checking a box when we've addressed those. So I'll, I'll quickly run through that. The, the first is, uh, sales tax proceeds. So we had already, uh, allocated funds to repair the police station roof and siding. That left three items, and we addressed all three items tonight. What, the first was the $105,000 from the special infrastructure sales tax money, uh, to bolster the special highway funding to do our fourth year of continued street maintenance. Um, and within that four-year period and what we're planning to do in '22, you'll have a program where you can say in that five-year span, you, we touched every street within the city limits in some capacity. Um, the second item is the $182,000 that we had allocated for the Church Street Bridge. We're still keeping that in place, but we're moving forward with the study so that we can fulfill that obligation. And then, um, the $15,000 from the city share of the county sales tax to do the crosswalks with the thermal plastics. Um, the secondary, or the second section is general fund. Um, we had two remaining items in there, um, uh, and they still remain. The $15,000 we allocated for the city's website design. We wanted to get through our RFP process on the compensation and benefit study. Um, and so now that that's done and we're implementing that, we're working on that RFP. Um, and then the only other item remaining in that category is $4,500, uh, to assist the Tongonoxi Historical Society. And so we'll, uh, we'll try to get them in motion to get approval. Uh, the third section is utility funds. Uh, we only have one of the remaining three boxes there, and that's, uh, $15,000 from the utility funds, uh, for the high-service water pumps and water plant discharge. And I think actually we've got part of that underway as well. Um, so that box could potentially be checked. Uh, the public safety capital funds, um, really the only outstanding piece there is we had allocated, uh, of the two items that were, uh, identified, we had allocated $8,400 match for some grants that we were going after, and I think we're still just waiting to see if those grants would be awarded. And then the, the second page is simply the timeline for the 2022 budget. We've made it some adjustments, adjustments to that based on the Senate Bill 13 and the truth in taxation and, and if we would need to move to, uh, an alternative calendar, what that would look like. And we'll know a little bit more about that as we move in through June and, and the early July budget meeting. So we're, we're checking off a lot of boxes, but it's a lot of projects that are important and very needed in the community. And we're happy to give these progress reports because, um, that's how you, I guess, partially how you prove things are getting done. So...
Progress.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Brackovich. Um, yeah, I've been really happy with the progress that we've done the last year and a half or so and, and, and the last few years of the previous council, too. Just, uh, a lot of work. It's great. Thank you. Um, City Attorney Agenda, do you have anything, Ms. Kristolich?
Uh, Mayor, I do not.
Thank you. Uh, Mayor Protem Agenda?
I don't have anything, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hempel. Uh, City Council Agenda, anyone have anything? Uh, Mayor Agenda is just, um, I, I don't know how the, uh, city, the, how the storytelling fest went, but I know that went on this past weekend. Um, our farmer's market is growing. Uh, we had a ribbon cutting, thanks to Ms. Gee for organizing that or, and her organization. Um, and I, and as I kind of said earlier, I'm so happy to see your faces. Uh, it's just great. Uh, Mr. Brackovich, the COVID report that came out today, did we have any actives?
Uh, no, we didn't.
So that's three out of the last four weeks was done. Fabulous. Okay. With all that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much.